A document that I believe has a PDF in it from the.
Nope. Nope. Oh, yes.
Are you connected? There we go.
Uh, he took the, he took the, uh, the line.
Yeah, I'll get him to come back. Alright, there we go. So if you scroll down, there is no attachment, so I have to send it with you to make sure that it has the attachment. Let's try this. Okay.
No, that's not bad. You're gonna be troubled with Wi-Fi, aren't you?
No, I'm not. Yeah, I think I'm good. Where's the part where it says include attachment?
It's not seeing your computer's.
It's not?
I don't know why. It's something in the computer.
Alright. I sent it again.
Yeah, but it's not seeing her computer.
Okay.
So that's a setting in the computer that I.
Okay. So that doesn't work?
No.
Alright.
Anybody?
Well, can you send it, um, you sent it as a PDF?
I did.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter what the file is. If she's not, if this doesn't flash on her computer and read off her computer, then it's not.
Thank you. Welcome to use mine if you can just print these questions and then. I think you're gonna have the same problem as all the apples that you need a.
We'll have a dongle for the Mac.
A transition piece.
Uh, yeah.
Oh wow.
HP.
Okay.
Well.
We'll just have to make sure that it gets out, um. We'll just have to make sure that we did it out the best way we can. It did go out on the town's websites. It did go out through communications, so people do have it. I was just hoping to reinforce that.
We're all set? I think, I think I'm good. Yeah. Is it, how's that? Is that a little better? Good? Check. Awesome. T minus two minutes.
Do you have the agenda printed out? Are you sure we're posted for seven fifteen?
I do, I have it printed out, but she had it on her computer.
Really? So weird. I could've sworn it was posted from seven, but that the interview is scheduled for seven fifteen. Alright. This is what happens when you try to do fifteen things at once.
I have no idea what that feels like. Are we ready for the, are we waiting for the red light to turn green?
Basically.
Like this close? Oh.
Yeah.
Right there. Oh.
I can turn it down, but I can't turn it up if I'm getting nothing.
That was a little too close. Is that better? Okay.
Alright, are we good to go? Alright. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Groton Dunstable Regional School District School Committee, and this evening, we are starting our superintendent interviews. Tonight, we have with us Jeff Bruno. He's the first of our four candidates to be interviewed. There will be no public comment this evening. We are trying to capture as much of those seventy-five minutes as we can to make sure that we can have our own questions answered. I want to ensure that everybody understands that there's a feedback form that was sent out as part of the distribution through the town, through the email, and social media. There's a number of different ways that it was posted for everybody to use. If you find that you need that feedback form or QR, please reach out to the central office to Joanne Sev- Sev- Sevals- what's that? Sevalsia? I never can pronounce her last name. That's too bad. She's gonna kill me. To Joanne, and she'll make sure that that form gets sent to you, or that you have the information you need. We're basically going to go around the room, and each, each of the school committee members will ask a question, and we'll hopefully get to do that a couple times to ask Mr. Bruno a few things about the district. I'm gonna start with an introduction, a question for an introduction, and thank you, by the way, for everybody getting here. It's been quite a day with the snow and with logistics, but we've had quite a bit of participation from the teachers and staff, as well as parents. So I just wanna say thank you very much for, for showing up this evening. So I'm gonna start with an introduction, or asking for Mr. Bruno to provide us a little bit of an introduction, and in that introduction, I'm gonna ask us, ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you chose GD to put an application in.
Yeah.
And now that you've visited the district, what have you identified as GD's strengths and weaknesses, and what skillset do you possess that will support those strengths or resolve our weaknesses to make us a better district? And what priorities, then, would you include as part of an entry plan for your superintendency?
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to also extend my thanks to all the staff and administrative team who spent time with me today, so got here at nine twenty-five. It was snowing like crazy. It's been snowing most of the day, but got here well, and Dr. Chesson was, was with me for a large part of the day, spent a ton of her time and energy with me as well, which, which was wonderful. I got to see classrooms at the high school, at the middle school, at Floro, saw Swallow Union, Boutwell, which was awesome. Got to hang with some of the preschoolers. So it was really a great day, and I was, I was so appreciative of the time and thoughtful questions that, that people asked. Also was able to meet with just a great group of, of teachers, again, I think represented most buildings, late afternoon, early evening, kinda braved the weather and came back out, and also a group of parents for this last meet and greet. As far as who I am and, and why I'm here, I'm in my third year as Scarborough Superintendent in Scarborough, Maine. Prior to that, I was Superintendent in Falmouth, Maine, for seven years. In two thousand thirteen or two thousand fourteen, prior to moving to Maine as a Superintendent, I was Director of Curriculum and Instruction at K to twelve at Saugus Public Schools in Saugus, Mass. Was the middle school principal in Saugus as well, at Belmonte Middle School. Prior to that, was Assistant Principal in Hockington, and started my career as a middle school science teacher in Lawrence. So spent a lot of my career as an educator and school leader in Mass, and then again, these last, I'm in my tenth year now as Superintendent in Southern Maine. So what brings me to Groton Dunstable, number one, I'm, we've, a year and a half ago, we moved back to Massachusetts. I'm in, I'm in Andover now. I've got four girls. My oldest is twenty, and she's a junior in college. I have two in the high school, a senior and a sophomore, and a seventh grader that runs the house, and will be running something someday in the near future. But, so we're, we're in Andover, living in Andover. My wife's job is in Newton, and so I'm, I'm doing the drive from Andover to Scarborough. But more importantly, I'm, I'm very much looking forward to, to leading in, in Massachusetts and becoming a mass educator again. I think Groton Dunstable, the, the tradition, high expectation, and the tradition of excellence in support for the public schools really came through, I think, in my, my visit, and particularly in, in talking with parents and staff. I think the aligned, the strategic vision and values, and the overarching goals for, for this year and upcoming years, despite the budget challenges, are very much aligned with my values as an educator, and a lot of the things that we're also working on in Scarborough, which is a similar-sized district, a little bigger or just under three thousand kids. But, but looking at, you know, having a unified centralized campus, and being able to really focus on my leadership style, which is very much being as much as possible, being in schools, being visible in the community, and, and focusing decision-making on, on our kids and, and the classrooms, and, and making sure that we're not operating in silos, and that we're operating together. And building an effective district-wide leadership team that's connected to the community and, and communicating well. And a lot of the, the focus on, on meeting the needs of all kids, and, and the growth for all students, making sure they're, they're feeling connected to the community, and then also progressing, and, and getting the, the content and skills that they need to, to excel in school and in life. And, and digging in to the focus on the district with regard to multi-tiered systems of supports, again, meeting the needs of all kids and being clear on educational outcomes. I was really struck with the, the, the group of teachers that I had the opportunity to meet with, both with their questions, and then their just sense of collegiality, and how much they support one another and are focused on, on meeting the needs of kids. So very passionate and committed to the community and to the school district. A few of them have, you know, made their careers here, and, you know, we went from, I've been in the district for five years, working for eight years, to a high school teacher saying twenty-three, and another one that said forever. I'm not quite sure how, how long that is, but just very, very committed and focused educators. I feel like being able to assess and continue to ask questions, and, and to start building a team, and right out of the gate, obviously, focusing in on some, some very real budget challenges and deficits, and finding creative ways to, to address resources. And particularly, you know, I know there's an override coming up, and there's, there's obviously a lot of, of talk and concern on making sure that we're being able to meet the needs of all students and maintain those high expectations as front and center in people's mind. And so I feel like my, my experience, having been a superintendent and managed now ten budgets, that I can contribute and, and also start to build a team that is very forward-looking and, and focused on meeting the needs of all kids.
So I think we'll go around the room with Zan. We'll start with you.
Good evening. I'm.
Hi.
I'm, I'm a little curious, could you, oops, can you please speak to, in your resume, you talk about curriculum maps, and you talk about sharing innovative classroom practices. So my question is, can you describe your experience with implementing or conducting a curriculum audit and implementing new curriculum initiatives? What methods do you use to assess the effectiveness of instructional programs while looking at the content area?
So first of all, I think it's, it's critical as a curriculum director, particularly at the district-wide level, that, that you have a, that you implement a routine cycle for reviewing curriculum in different content areas. So you, you, you think past just where you are in the current year and also future years, but you're, there's a system in place to where you're reviewing curriculum across different content areas and different phase levels on an ongoing basis. So it starts to become embedded in the culture of, of what you do. So, and that includes having a system where you've got a curriculum director who's meeting collectively with building leadership, which also includes teacher leadership at every level, as well as instructional coaches and other folks, and, and the instructional leadership of each building, so that you're in a constant state of reviewing curriculum, and also finding better ways to, to, to meet the needs of kids, and to ensure that the instruction and the curricular programming is current, up-to-date, and innovative as well. And also taking advantage of the multitude of, of digital tools, and, you know, that we've been inundated with frankly as, as educators. But really, it has to be embedded also in your teacher professional growth and supervisory system, where you've got all of your teachers setting student learning goals, as well as their own professional practice goals, and they're able to team and work in professional learning teams to really constantly assess their units, designs that, that are, you know, focused on first outcomes. How are we assessing the content and skills that we want our kids to know and be able to do at different levels and in, and in different content areas? And then, okay, what are the steps and the tools and the units that will, will get us there to make sure that our kids are, are focused, but also engaged in learning in, in the skills and, and content that they need to at each level?
Thank you. With that, could you just share with me maybe one, sharing with me one innovative classroom practice that you've put into, put into play?
So we, we, and, and Falmouth initiated some project-based learning at the high school level that also included some senior discovery projects, and it was all built around the evolution of our Falmouth Learning Gardens, which originally was a, a grant that we got through FEF, which is the Falmouth Educational Foundation. And it's, it's a greenhouse along with associated gardens that the students help to manage and grow. We had different kids in STEM and science who were part of developing different aspects of the Falmouth Gardens, and there's, there was a multitude of curricular links across both the high school and middle school. So we, we dug in on that. We also had a three-day, we would have a three-day program at the high school called SAIL, Student Adventures in Learning, and these were, these were projects that with faculty assistance were developed by peers and by students for an extended learning opportunity of a day or two on a specific topic, a passion. So we had, you know, students who were, who were into a specific sport, or we had students who were into environmental science, and would pick a topic, dig in deep, and then create learning opportunities for their fellow students. And we would close the high school for a couple of days, well, not close, and we would just have two days in the spring where students will sign up for different courses, that with faculty assistance were led and peer-led by their peers. And it was such a powerful experience, and we would time it in, in such a time where it was right after they had taken some standardized assessments, and there was towards the end of the year where you're, where you're finding, trying to find engaging ways and powerful ways for kids to continue their learning. And this was something that, that originally was an idea of some students, that they came to the faculty, and the faculty built this out to be a, a project-based, two-day seminars that were really student-driven. It was, it was, it was very powerful, and something that I think had a ripple effect across the whole high school, really, and the staff.
Thank you very much. That was good. Fay, I have other questions, but I wait.
Let's, let's get everyone an opportunity to have a question, and we'll go back around, Brian.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I wanna briefly lay out a real scenario that you'll be facing if you become the Superintendent of the Groton Dunstable Regional School District, and here, how you'll respond to this scenario, and it's a very similar scenario to the one that was brought up in the last session. So wages and benefits make up approximately seventy percent of our school district's budget. Most unions and districts are settling for between two and a half to three and a half percent annual raises. We have step-in lane movement that causes the total growth rate of salaries to be even higher than the negotiated raises. The cost of benefits is growing even faster than wage growth. In our towns, our local revenues are only growing at a rate of two and a half percent, based on Proposition Two and a Half, and about point five percent for new growth, for a grand total of three percent growth on the revenue side. This clearly means that our expenses are growing much faster than our revenues.
Yeah.
So a couple of questions. One, have you been in this situation previously? And then two, given that this is the situation you would be facing as the Superintendent of our district for the foreseeable future, what budget would you propose? Level services, whatever the cost, living within local revenue, whatever that means in terms of cuts, something in between, and why?
Well, first of all, I haven't been in a position where I've had to do extensive cuts. I have been in a position, in fact, this was last year, where we had to have a proposal ready for cuts, and actually got saved by the state. So we had some subsidy adjustment at the last minute that, that kinda saved us. And so, so yes, and in particular in Scarborough, we're about, close to ninety percent of, of what's spent is local revenue, and roughly about ten percent is state subsidy. So really, it's about like, like if there are significant increases in cost and expenditures on those side of things, it's gonna fall on the local taxpayer. So anything outside of, you know, a two percent increase, three percent, gets beyond that, it, it becomes difficult to pass. So there's no question that, that you have to live within your means, so to speak, and, and it's very hard to do anything other than that. So, and in addressing, in particular this year, the, kind of like the fiscal funding gap with all the, with the ending of, of all the federal money, which we, we tried to step down over a two-year period, and, and any federal-funded positions being now in the local budget. We, we avoided most of the cliff, but not all of it. This is gonna be a tough, tough budget year. And, and I think we've been able to be planful in the sense of if we have retirements in positions that we can re-task and not fill, so that we're avoiding a reduction in force, which, which is very difficult. Luckily, I've, I've, in ten years of Superintendent, have, have not had to initiate a reduction in force personnel in that way. And, and in some senses, it's been really challenging to, to even staff fully the ed techs that we need. So we've been in a situation in last year and then even this year where we're, we're short-staffed because we can't find people. So like, we have listings for, for ed techs that, and positions that, that are in the budget, but we can't fill. So in that sense, you know, that's, that's kinda saved us from, from doing a reduction in force, but there has to be, there's only so much, only so much revenue coming in, and, and so you have to make some difficult choices. That said, when, when we're able to take advantage of, of any savings due to retirement or not fill a position, and then make some hard decisions that can impact class size, then, then we do that. So we're, we're trying to be mindful of enrollment and, and lean, as lean as possible, but you have to, you have to address the structural deficit, and in particular with an override coming up. If that override doesn't pass, then there's gonna be some hard choices, and as you, as you've already noted, I mean, eighty percent of, of the money spent is people in, in a school district, and that's, that's true, that's been true in Maine year in and year out. That's, that's true here in Mass. And from what I've researched so far, the, the, the funding for Groton Dunstable in particular has been very flat in terms of Chapter Seventy money over the last five years. And, and it's, it's different depending on what community you're in, but with enrollment either steady or declining, then you've gotta find ways to do more with less, or, or make some, some tough cuts. That being said, you can be creative, and you have to maintain a level of service for our students and, and the, the programming that, that, you know, we expect to the school district.
Okay. Thank you. Like, one more I could ask Fay, or depending on.
Is it a follow-up to this one, or?
Uh, relating to budget, but it's a, sort of a different question.
Okay, then we should move on.
Okay.
I actually have a follow-up, though, to his question that I'd like to quickly ask. So what I'm unclear about, and what was in his question, was would you propose level services, or living within your, within your local revenue, or somewhere in between? And I think that was unclear to me, 'cause I'm.
I, I mean, I, I probably, I guess I would address that as somewhere in between, because maintaining level services means that you have to, you have to build in and have the money to keep the people that you have. I mean, that's, that's level services, and what it costs to, to fund level services goes up year in and year out. So, you know, that needs to be within your means unless you're, unless you're having to pass an override vote every year, which is politically challenging.
Thank you.
Welcome. So the question I have is in regards to closing the achievement gap. The school that you worked in as a principal was recognized by Deval Patrick.
Yeah.
As a commendation school, and it was the result of reducing the achievement gap between the general education and special education students, students who receive special education services, I should say, by implementing a full inclusion model for special education service delivery. Can you describe how you were able to achieve that and how you would continue to do so?
That, that was Belmonte Middle School, and that's, that's a throwback. It's been a while. I would say we, we implemented a new schedule, number one, that, that allowed for essentially a rotating intervention block, and it also allowed special education teachers and caseworkers some time for some common planning. And that, that degree of collaboration between special educators in the building and general educators and, and the classroom teachers, I, I think was huge. And then I think, I really think that by implementing a new schedule, that number one, we were able to get some additional teachers so that we could implement the new schedule and reduce class size. But what it also did was, is again, is it set up that common planning time across teams, and allowed for our special educators to have some time to plan with, with other teachers, and then also allow for this additional intervention block for students that could be, you know, it was mostly focused on, on literacy, language arts, or mathematics. So what that did was, is it, is it, that in the previous iteration of the schedule, students with, who were on IEPs and required that additional intervention block, or had it in their schedule, were excluded from other things. They had to choose almost in order to get that additional schedule, which number one, wasn't right, and number two, wasn't an inclusionary practice that was appropriate for kids. So doing that schedule change, and then allowing for that opportunity for, for planning and teamwork among the teachers, I think was, was the driving force, and obviously the additional intervention time for kids, put us over the.
Thank you.
Made, made significant progress for kids ultimately on MCAS.
Okay. So I wanna share with you a current situation at our high school regarding scheduling and class sizes. You may wanna write it down. I don't know. We have a block schedule at our high school.
Yep.
This comes with certain advantages and disadvantages. At a recent school committee meeting, the administration presented data that showed we have a total of a hundred and forty-seven sections, twenty-six of which are over twenty-five students, eighteen have less than fifteen. The average teacher load at the high school is sixty students per teacher. Do you draw any immediate conclusions from the numbers? Do you support block scheduling versus and another type of schedule? And if so, why are we not? If the school committee wanted you to evaluate the current schedule for possible. Do you support block scheduling versus and another type of schedule? And if so, why are we not? If the school committee wanted you to evaluate the current schedule for possible changes, tell me about the process that you would go through to gather data and present a recommendation and who would you charge with leading that process? And if there was staff pushback because it resulted in staff reductions and teachers having to take on a higher load, how would you handle the objection?
First of all, there's a whole lot of questions that need to be asked and a lot of data to be collected. A high school principal absolutely would, would be a huge part of that. I think you need to be asking a lot of questions, you need to be seeking a lot of feedback. We've got a ton of years in the building from staff experience, obviously with the block schedule that's been in place, I think, until since like the late nineties.
It's been around for a long.
So I was asking some question along those lines. I mean, a, a traditional block schedule, there's a lot of high schools now that run a, a modified block schedule. So I mean, there, there are pros and cons to block scheduling. As you mentioned, the biggest con being that, you know, for kids anyway, having a, having a block that length can be, can be hard frankly. And then also you're not seeing them every day, day in and day out and in even core academic classes. So having a modified block schedule, a lot of schools have gone to. So I mean, I think, I think getting data and getting feedback from staff, starting with, you know, whether it's a, a Google survey with some open-ended like pros and cons, but definitely trying to get as much feedback from teachers and staff as led by the, the high school principal is valuable. As far as, as far as, you know, we, we've just had this discussion just now with, with our own leadership team, because we're, we're facing potential cuts for this year budget-wise. How you schedule a high school is a different animal. It's a different beast than how you schedule, obviously, an elementary school and middle school. And you're also looking at high schools that also need to maintain a breadth of programming and options for kids and electives and, and a lot of different things. So it's very difficult to have a consistent or balanced approach to, you know, the class size. You know, you have some sections that will be much larger and then you have smaller sections and more specialized courses that will be smaller. So that being said, there are ways to combine sections and things that you can do to, to consolidate a little bit, but, but that gets, that gets, that gets very challenging, obviously. But, but that work has to start with evaluating and getting feedback from as much of the staff as possible, asking questions and getting a full picture of why things are designed the way that they are. Because how you, again, how you, how you compress and how you plan and how you schedule a high school is very, very different than what you do at the middle school level or at the elementary level.
So one of the questions was if you got pushback and it resulted in staff reductions or teachers having to take on a higher load, how would you handle the objection?
Well, I think, I think you've got to go at it directly with, with those who are objecting and, and be ready. And again, that's why having all the data and, and being able to justify and having more than just you as part of trying to discover what the problem and potential solution is. These are discussions that do have to happen at the leadership level and not just with, with high school staff, but across the district because we're all interconnected when we're putting together a yearly budget. And so part of my job as superintendent too is to take that K to twelve approach. And when you're building a budget and making hard decisions, you're looking at it with, with everyone in the room from, from high school leaders down to, down to elementary school principals as well.
Thank you. Rafi?
Mr. Bruno, welcome back.
Thank you.
How does your educational philosophy influence your approach to improving student achievement? And how would you apply this philosophy in our district? Could you provide an example of how you have implemented this philosophy in a past role to enhance student learning outcomes?
So my, my philosophy around education, you know, is really kind of rooted in my core values. Effort determines achievement is the first one. Actions speak louder than words. Be humble and serve. So those core values I have written up on my whiteboard that I've had in my office actually since the Belmonte years when I was principal. And so, and, and on the board with, with the girls since they were little was work hard and be nice. So I feel like kids, their growth and their development is not static. It grows, just like our brain grows as we develop. It's, it's like when you exercise, right? Like you're working the muscle, you're working your brain muscle. So, so the, I think it's, it can get very easy for people to sort and to classify depending on a, you know, a student's record. So you can always find ways to improve, you can always find ways to connect. It's our job as educators to make sure that all of our students feel a sense of connection and then also feel like there's somebody there rooting for them and that, and that they can always grow and get better and achieve. And, and so as far as what does that look like in practice as a teacher, I seem to always, I seem to always gravitate, probably because I was the kid who wasn't particularly motivated, but was just, you know, going through to make sure that, you know, I, you know, I didn't stick out, you know? So trying to connect with kids who are disengaged, trying to find authentic learning experiences for kids that are relevant, that are relevant to their lives and relevant to where they want to go, to build systems so that, that teachers have, you know, dynamic, engaging classrooms where, where kids are motivated to learn and understand what they're doing is important and how it's connected to, to their lives. And maybe that doesn't always, that's not always going to happen in every grade level or at every series of development, but you only do that really too by, by just being, being present and being in schools and being in the community and working together with staff, teachers, as well as administrators to, to make sure that, you know, people understand that, that you're there for all kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a two-part question, so I'll ask the first and then I'll do a follow-up if that's okay.
No problem.
What do you see as being key components to developing and maintaining a strong school community and a supportive school culture that encourages students to work hard and to grow in their learning?
I mean, again, it's, it's, it's that idea of having a growth mindset, you know? And, and that, that starts from the top. I'm always learning on the job every day, as is any teacher and, and any administrator. So understanding that, that we're all growing and part of that is also how you supervise and evaluate. So what I like about the educator effectiveness model and, and Mass, and it's actually a model that I borrowed when I went, when, when I, when I went up to Maine, is that teachers ideally are goal-setting as well. And so they have a goal for their students, a student learning goal. That can get challenging to try and set because how, depending on what you teach, how are you measuring that growth for kids? But having a, a student growth goal and then a, a professional growth goal as well and then doing that in collaborative teams as much as possible, that has a, that, that just has, has a cumulative effect across the building is that when, when people look at their professional responsibilities that way, that also bleeds into how the kids look at how they're doing in the classroom, you know? And, and so if you can set up systems where the kids are, you know, have the opportunity to evaluate each other's work, whether it's, you know, some peer editing, that kind of thing. And I saw some, some of that happening in, in a fourth grade classroom today where, where, you know, students are working in small groups and they're collaborating on a presentation that they're going to make. This one was on natural disasters. So we had, what do we have? We had hurricanes, we had tsunamis, we had earthquakes and I can't remember tornadoes. So that was group two. So again, it's like we're all learners, we're lifelong learners, and then we're all trying to develop the skills to get a little bit better and to connect with those around us, whether they're classmates or whether they're our colleagues.
Thank you. Incidentally, that may have been my daughter's classroom. That's what she's working on right now.
Fourth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second part.
I'm thinking of his name, Mr.
Um.
Mr. Fabey? Okay. Good job.
She's swallow union, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anyway, the second part of my question, are you familiar with culture and climate surveys? And have you ever used them to inform your decision-making process?
Yes. So we've used Panorama for, for surveys that, that have gone out to families and to parents in the community and as well as to staff as well. And those have been tremendously helpful because again, you're looking, you get to have a big view and you can, you can, you are able to, they have nationally normed, a whole series of nationally normed questions. They get at issues of, of safety feeling connected to the schools, parent involvement, a lot of community involvement, things of that nature. Then there are also similar questions that are all for staff as well. And so there, there are kind of like the prepackaged questions that are nationally normed, so you're going to see where you fall, you know, in terms of how people answer certain questions. And then there, there's always, there is a collection of questions that you can author yourself and ask, you know, more specific questions that are directly related to issues you're facing in Scarborough, for example. And, and so, and, and we've used the results of those surveys to really benchmark, you know, whether it's staff morale, whether, you know, particularly coming out of COVID and returning to full person, back to in-person instruction, you know, the, the disconnect that parents felt because they hadn't been in the building yet even or even set for, dropped their kids off or just, or not, like there, there was just much more of a presence or a parental presence even in the building. And the survey kind of helped kind of quantify that a little bit. And so, you know, and then there, there were other things, feeling like they're, like their students weren't quite ready for the routines of school as they were getting geared up in the, in the fall. And based on one of our Panorama surveys in the previous year, we set up appointment days at the elementary school where parents were able to, to connect with, with their child's teacher before the first day of classes. And so that was something that was a result of, of one of our community and climate surveys. And then, and then the staff surveys, same, same thing. You know, we were able to, to kind of drill down on staff feeling like they didn't have as much opportunity in a structured way to, to collaborate with those in the same grade level. And so we were able to look at, this was particularly at the middle school I can think of, where we looked at some scheduling changes that again, similar as I mentioned to my Belmonte experience, were able to, to make some changes that would make sure that we had dedicated team time for those, for staff to, to make sure that they could co-plan and, and, and that had, and then able to track with the same survey at the end of the next year whether or not you had made any progress along those lines. So those are the two examples, at least in Scarborough, I can think of that were, that were impactful for us as a leadership team, were those Panorama surveys, one being for the staff and, and the other being for our community and parents.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I have a follow-up question after my first one.
Okay.
Can you tell us about the experiences you've had with collective bargaining on both management and the teacher side of the table? What's the best role for the superintendent?
So the role for the superintendent, I've collectively bargained for, for contracts, three in Falmouth and then we just had one last year in, in Scarborough. And my role as superintendent is, is really to make sure, to, to work with the Board of Education Negotiation Team. So, so all the, all the preparation meetings, all the actual negotiation sessions with the SEA, Scarborough Educational Association. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a part of those meetings in, in an advisory role and a research and planning role and making sure that, that the negotiating team has the direction and guidance and, and able to, to grab data when necessary and also to benchmark kind of where we are with, with other similar districts. And so there, it's, it's not a, a direct negotiating role, but it's very critical and important that myself, as well as our assistant superintendent, are a part of all a lot of the planning and preparation for, for those meetings and, and team preparation on, on the board side. I also think it's critical as superintendent that you're maintaining ongoing communication with union leaders and principals are also with their building reps outside of negotiations. But with collective bargaining, it's really critical, I think, for, for the superintendent and assistant superintendent as well. And in our case, it's been very critical to, to be in all of those meetings and to help prepare and to make sure that we have, that the negotiating team on the board side or the school committee side in this case has all the information and data available to them to be able to negotiate effectively.
Thank you. My second question is, if you needed to make changes in a budget in the middle of an academic year, how would you go about doing so? And how would you communicate the need of these changes to all stakeholders?
So changes in terms of during the course of the school year, like if, if things weren't lining up to what was approved?
Correct.
Well, I mean, hopefully we don't, you don't get in a situation where that happens in, in the middle of the year, having to make, you know, and I've never, never faced that before, having to, to make any kind of cuts during the course of a fiscal year. So I don't, I don't really know exactly how to, how to answer that question. I mean, if, if there are difficult choices that need to be made in the middle of, in the middle of a year, then, you know, you'd obviously try and go to any, anything that wasn't personnel-related or required to cut someone's position or job. We've had to, we've had to freeze a, a budget and, and end any kind of supply spending before the year was out. But that's the only example that I can, that I can think of in terms of not being able to keep someone or, or keep someone employed through the, through the end of a, of the current school year that you're budgeting in. So, but budget freezes, we've had to do, had to do that a couple of times in order to make it, you know, through the school year.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Again, all right. Professional development is a key element for supporting and maintaining an impactful, inclusive district culture. It's important that all stakeholders make inclusivity and accessibility a top priority when communicating to our community and implementing, implementing change at Groton Dunstable.
Yep.
As the district's leader, how would you ensure that the district develops a community-wide, inclusive culture? How would you go about communicating information about efforts to improve the inclusivity of school events, policies, curriculum, et cetera, in a way that fosters positivity and invites collaboration around inclusivity? Can you give an example of how you involve staff in an improvement process to address a complex issue and what your main considerations were as you navigated the collaborative process with them?
That is a, quite a question. So I was thinking as you were talking, we, we did, this was actually Falmouth and Yarmouth collaborated on what I think was one of the best professional days I've been a part of. And the whole theme of it was innovation. And we actually, part of the reason why we collaborated with Yarmouth is we had to spend the money on George Coros, who's, is Canadian and is about innovating inside the box and has, has, you know, how do you innovate with the resources that you have, that kind of stuff? And he's a very dynamic speaker and, and so he came in and did a thing. And then actually, that was only the first third of the day and the rest of the day was, has anyone ever been to an unconference before? An unconference model?
Yeah.
So an unconference model is really, and I've, I've always found this to be true, that the best professional development is not to sit and get and listen to somebody talk to you, but it spreads from teacher to teacher and educator to educator. So. So, um, we, we, and this took some time to, to design and develop, but created essentially, um, an unconference where, uh, teachers will have a, a very specific skill, whether it's an instructional strategy or a content area or a technology or something like that, that they're gonna teach to whoever decides to show up to their seminar. And so you have this huge kind of matrix of, of all of these different seminars that are all, um, run and facilitated and guided by colleagues, by, uh, peers. And then this, this crossed, uh, two districts as well. So, so we, so we had faculty across two districts who were, were attending our, uh, Innovation Unconference. So it had a theme, it cut across all content areas. You could vote with your feet if you got into a seminar and it wasn't your gig, you could get up and go to a different one. Um, and just the energy that it created and also the connections that it made. Not, not just across teachers in, in different school districts, but also across even within the same school district. So it created the, the, those connections. And then I was thinking as you were talking, well, what if we had, cause this was on a, a professional learning day, like what if we had communicated that to both communities and, and to our boards? Like I think our, our boards knew what we were doing, but not really the specifics. Or, or what if we had even brought them in to be part of that day? Or, or brought in some folks from the community to kind of expand that idea. Um, to your point about, about being inclusive and about, um, tying in a very authentic way, you know, professionals that are in the community that could have a seminar specific to something that's, that's super important and critical and related to education, but, but they're not an educator, right? So, expanding that idea of, um, leveraging as many different people's skillset as you can in a very kind of deliberate, inclusive manner probably would have taken that event and made it even better. Um, we were talking a little bit about this during the, um, the meet and greet with parents about, about communication. And one of the challenges for me as a superintendent is that people get their information through so many different mediums, through whether it's social media, whether it's emails or getting email blitzed on things, or whether it's, um, you know, there's so many different ways that people get their information that you feel like you have to blast it out to everybody, everybody to such a degree that, that sometimes you get numb to it. I mean, I know as a parent with four kids, it's just like, oh, I got another email, I got, I mean, I got things coming at me from so many different avenues that it's almost like too much communication. So where's the sweet spot, right? And, and then how do you have, um, people, how are people that are aware of what's going on, but you're not, you know, you know, you're not banging them over the head with it? But if there are big events like an Innovation Professional Development Day that typically is like, oh, the teachers are doing their thing, but nobody really knows what's happening, uh, are there, are there opportunities to, to do that? Um, in this case, across, across two different towns, which was, um, had so many ripple effects after the fact that I don't, that, that I don't think we really anticipated. And that's just, uh, connections between educators who are, um, role-specific and, and may teach the same things, but do so in different communities. And now they have a, kind of like a, a partner in crime, so to speak, and where they can, you know, bounce ideas off of and build that, that connection that will extend, you know, into the future of their career as teachers.
Thank you. And a quick follow-up, um, I understand what you mean about becoming numb to the communication. I'm also a parent of four kids and get all those emails.
Yes, you went with the, you didn't stop at three, good job.
But I have a question, uh, just to push further, um, when we are communicating out about issues that relate to inclusion, how do we get everybody in the district on the same page to be, making sure that their language, um, matches what's being presented in those professional development sessions? How do we as a community make sure that, um, we are speaking true to where our values are when it comes to inclusion in education for all?
Yeah, I think, um, if we can as much as possible try to avoid divisive jargon or jargon that shouldn't be divisive, but somehow has become so. And we're, we're focused on like, for example, um, we, I, I've even, I struggle, I struggle with this one a little bit, but like, social emotional learning, I think for people can be a trigger. Well, no, I want you to teach my kids the A B Cs in math, like what are you doing teaching them social emotional learning? Well, okay, so let's, let's peel away the layers. What are we really focused on? We're focusing on student learning. We, and, and yes, part of, um, being able to learn effectively is you need to, um, feel like your social emotional wellness is a big piece of that, right? And so it's all interrelated. And if you're gonna be ready to learn new things, um, you also have to be in a state of mind to do that effectively. So, um, well, what I, what I've found is like, it's like, um, in Maine, for a while, it was proficiency-based education. If you say proficiency-based education now in Maine, immediately people will turn off. And what is it really? It's really like, we wanna make sure that all kids are proficient. But because of, you know, having to change how we grade and all these other things, it took on a political component that isn't what it really meant in the first place. Um, and I think that can happen with, you know, D E I, with, uh, social emotional learning. Let's peel away the layers. Well, what are we talking about here? We're talking about, um, educational outcomes for kids. We're talking about finding the best instructional strategies that will work for, for a, a much wider variety of how kids learn. And then we're talking about, okay, now what tools do we have available, um, to connect? And, and we also want, um, kids to feel connected in their classrooms and, and with their teachers as well. So, uh, I think communicating and getting beyond the jargon and focusing on, okay, what does this mean for my child and whether or not they're connected and feel like they're growing, um, academically and otherwise? Um, that's, that's the real work.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, so my question is, um, can you describe, excuse me, I'm just making sure I get the right question. Yes. What strategies are you going to implement to support, um, the employment of more diverse faculty? And what do you plan to do to, um, to support? And what initiatives have you, um, have you implemented to maintain employee morale? When you can't offer monetary rewards financially, what are some of the other ideas you have implemented to keep talented teachers in our district? So it's kind of a twofold question.
Yeah, it's interesting. We, um, this, this was a study, actually, we, there were some Southern Maine assistant superintendents who put out a survey to all, and this was more focused on building-level administration, but like, what is keeping you in your job, you know? And, and, you know, questions related to, uh, wages, to, you know, how much you make versus how much do you feel supported by your colleagues and superintendent and, and leadership teams, those kind of things? And what, maybe, I, I, maybe you're surprised, maybe I would, what, what really came back was, is there a sense of trust and support that you felt? Um, and that's what kept people in districts. Uh, it wasn't necessarily whether or not they were the highest paid or, or if they had to accept, um, a COLA one year into the next or whatever, whatever it may be. It was, I mean, that was, that, that's a hundred percent a piece of it. Um, but it was that sense of feeling, um, like they had the support of their superintendent and that they were part of a team, um, that was really impactful to them staying. And, um, you know, I heard, I heard some of that a little bit with, uh, the teachers that, that I met with um, around just feeling a very strong connection with their colleagues, um, but then also wanting leadership and inspiration and, and, and feeling that sense of trust across an, an organization. So I think, uh, an answer to your question that, you know, what, what, what keeps people in this profession, particularly now, I think, which, where, um, a lot of people are feeling, a lot of educators are feeling burnt out, uh, a lot of, a lot of, and leaders too. And there's a, a high number of people who, you know, instead of hanging on for a few more years and then retiring, or just retiring now. Um, we've faced that and, you know, in Scarborough and other places. Um, so, but I, I think that sense of support and trust and feeling like, um, you can learn and grow together on, um, and feeling like you're connected, um, with your colleagues and, and with the students that you teach, uh, is, is what keeps people in the profession. As for, um, diversifying the workforce, this is, um, a, a huge challenge and also issue, uh, in Southern Maine in particular, where, um, Portland, in the Portland area in particular, there's a lot of new Mainers and refugees and in and around Portland is becoming, in a very, very short period of time, very diverse, um, ethnically and culturally. And, um, the, the workforce and those that teach and work in schools, um, does, has not reflected that shift, um, but, but needs to and needs to start doing that. And, and so a lot of districts in and around Portland, Scarborough included, are starting to work with U S M and, and other teacher preparation programs. And how do we expand, um, um, who is applying for teaching positions and, and getting teaching position jobs and trying to diversify our workforce? Because what multiple studies continue to show is that, uh, the teaching profession specifically is, is very much a local one. Um, and so you're drawing from the, the diversity that you have in your communities. Um, and a lot of times when there are significant shifts in, in, um, kind of student demographics, uh, it's, it's a little more challenging to, to have that same shift among, uh, those that work with kids. Uh, and so that's, that's definitely a challenge that we're facing and trying to do so by expanding the pool of, of applicants and, and collaborating, um, across districts. Cause you can't really do it on your own.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, uh, another budget-related question. Um, we have many community members and elected officials that flat-out reject our budget and the administration because they feel there's significant waste in the budget. Uh, they show that they don't understand how a 21st century education is delivered by saying, uh, we didn't have this when I was in school and it was good enough for me. So as a result, they target people in the administration. So, uh, I have three parts to this question. I'll give you the first two now and I'll give you the third later. So first part is, uh, have you been in this situation in the past? Could you tell me about it? Second part is, how do you explain to someone the difference in terms of what's required to deliver 21st century education versus 20th century education and the costs associated with it?
So, uh, I think, I think a lot of people, we, yes, we definitely are facing this in Maine and Scarborough in particular. Uh, I was, I was, I was remarking, I mean, people are very, very cost-conscious, uh, as they should be. Um, but, but there's this idea that, um, you know, we have our, we have our students still, like there's, there's a teacher at the head of the room and there, there are 20 kids in each room and they're, each in their own desk. And, um, so, we've got fewer kids, so that, you know, I mean, how we educate kids now is just fundamentally, um, different than it was even 20 years ago, 15 years ago. So, um, how classes are organized with a teacher at the head and, and on top of, um, how we're educating and how we're meeting, uh, children's needs, in particular as special education, um, and, and also significantly more team teaching as well as our need for, um, for, for, uh, social workers and counseling staff. And, and we also have, um, and a common one certainly in, in Scarborough too and in other districts is, um, instructional coaches. Uh, you know, it's not just, okay, we've got, we've got 20 kids in a classroom and then a teacher at the head. And, and even people will apply kind of the primary school, one-room schoolhouse, one teacher teaching all subjects and extend that even up into the middle school and, and high school. And then, and really it's, it's, I think it's, um, it's just not an understanding of, um, how we meet the needs of, of learners, but then also how we organize learning in schools now. Um, when you build a new building, how you design that building is so different, so, so different. When you walk through like, you know, and, and the new flow row, when you walk through that building, how it's designed to, to maximize, um, you know, small group learning along with larger opportunities for multiple classrooms to work together, um, to then work with, uh, kids in much smaller groups and having breakout spaces. It is just, you know, how we educate now is, is different than either, and than 10 years ago. And it's hard sometimes to get that across, um, to folks who, you know, again, see, continue to see, um, budgets growing and particularly when enrollment's, uh, flat.
Sure. I guess just really quickly, uh, last piece to that. So how do you address the concerns of these individuals to gain enough support to have a budget approved at town meeting as well as a positive opinion of the school district and its employees?
That's a great question and, and it's, um, it's challenging. It, it's inviting them, um, to have conversations, to, to ask follow-up questions, um, to, to describe the ways in which, um, uh, teachers are interacting with kids and, and how we're, we're organizing classrooms and the additional, um, the additional impact that it has when the, the scope of what we're trying to do in schools has also increased over the last 15, 20 years? I mean, what we're asking our, our teachers and educators to do, um, is, is not simply just, um, teach the content and, and move on, right? I mean, the skills, the, the focus on social, uh, emotional wellness, all of these things are, are tied together. Um, but I think what we're fundamentally asking our schools to do, uh, with our kids has expanded, you know, in the last 15, 20, 25, 30 years. I can't believe I'm in my fifth, what, what happened?
Thank you.
Is it really? Been in business this long? You brought up Belmonte, I'm like, oh my God, that was 2009, 2010?
All right. So my question is, um, how do you ensure that the curriculum taught is up-to-date and evidence-based? So that's my first part of the question. The second is, what tools would you utilize to, um, test the efficacy of it?
Well, uh, I think the, the nice piece is, is now that, now that we're, I mean, we, there was the one, one-year blip where we had, um, no M-CAS, but, but things are, things are up and running and, and you're able to have student data and student growth percentiles. And you can, you can search and look and run some analysis on student outcomes and, and really crunch the numbers. So number one, being focused on student outcomes, where are we? Um, evidence-based, to me really, uh, you know, tested instructional strategies. Um, evidence-based means what, well, what are the, start with the outcomes and work backwards from there. As far as, um, the curriculum being current and, and all of these things, I mean, you've gotta be in schools, you've gotta be in classrooms, you've gotta be, um, having leaders that will ask questions, that will work with department heads and teachers. Um, and, you know, frankly, a lot of times there, there are a lot of tried and true things that are continuing, will continue to be tried and true and continue, and continue to work effectively. I mean, um, you also all, don't wanna be chasing the, the newest, shiniest, brightest object just because, uh, people tell you it's the best way to go. I mean, I mean, there, there are some tried and true instructional strategies and that's why I bring it back to that, starting there, start with outcomes, really look at the data, be data-driven, um, and then back down from there. Okay, what instructional strategies are we utilizing? And there, there are a multitude of, of things that you can do at all different levels, whether it's, you know, cooperative grouping, whether it's, uh, direct instruction and then, uh, facilitated coaching, um, independent test for mastery, all of these ways of measuring and checking for understanding with students in the classroom that you can observe teachers doing, um, or not doing, that, that can impact the experience for kids. But you don't know that if you're in your office, um, and you think you know. Or, I mean, you can crunch, and again, there's, there's a lot of number crunching and, and access to data that you have available to you, but you also need to be in schools, um, you know, with, with your team and with your teachers to help support those efforts and make, making sure that, um, we're being as innovative and forward-thinking as we can. Um, but at the end of the day, that we're supporting the needs of the kids who are in our classrooms.
Thank you.
So many questions, so little time.
Oh boy, here we go. I'm, I'm on, I'm on hour number 13, so let's, let's keep going.
So I'm gonna combine a couple of things together. So I'd like to discuss your high-level plan and how you would measure the performance of G D against other districts. There are many different ways that people look to compare a district, um, to others. Uh, websites like U S News and World Report, great schools, rankings in the newspaper like Boston Globe, M-CAS, our own internal math and reading assessments. Which rankings matter, which do not, and why? Um, in a hypothetical situation, which is not so hypothetical, um, G D R S D in one of our schools goes down, uh, or one of our schools goes down in ranking such as goes down, or one of our schools goes down in ranking, such as the websites or the news outlets, or community members or school community members become, start questioning that. And a perception starts to grow that the district is failing on academic performance under your leadership. How do you respond? We, in our district, use what we call market baskets, in which we've chosen districts which we feel as though are comparable in metrics, enrollment, percentage of students, economically disadvantaged, so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Do you feel like that's an appropriate strategy to benchmark a district and, of course, than when we are falling out of favor because of some arbitrary ranking? How do you discuss that and make sure that everyone feels confident that we are still a top performer?
So, all right, so a quick story on US News and World Report. So the two highest-rated, rated, or whether it's NICH or US News and World Report's another popular one, but there's the high school rankings and then there's the overall district rankings. So Falmouth and Yarmouth would toggle back and forth, sometimes Cape, but Falmouth and Yarmouth and the superintendent who's in Yarmouth is a colleague and a good friend of mine. And we would, you know, needle each other about it. But there was, so there was, there was one year where there's, I'm forgetting what the metric is, but I think it had to do with performance on, I think it was AP testing or something like that. Anyway, there was the guidance counselor or the person who submits a report was late or they missed that report, so they did, their ranking got bumped down like three or four spots because of a reporting issue that just never got sent in or never got. So in other words, like the US World News Report, I mean, there, there's just examples of that being not the best measure of any kind of a ranking for public high schools or for a lot of other things for that matter. And I won't even touch the college rankings. That's a whole nother animal that we'd have, we'd spend like the rest of the night on. But so, in answer to your question, the, like, being able to identify a cohort of like districts, both in terms of enrollment, student demographic size, per pupil expenditure, those kind of things, like trying to find a cohort of five, six, seven districts that you're benchmarking yourself against is definitely the best way. I feel like in terms of what's, what's nice about being back in Massachusetts and MCAS, I know there's, there's certainly a ton of people who are, you know, pros and cons of standardized testing, all that kind of stuff. I'm a product now of 10 years of Maine where there's a lot of skepticism of any kind of standardized testing, so it's very difficult or challenging to benchmark how you're doing as a district against other like districts because of that. On top of the fact that the Maine Educational Assessments, the MEAs, you know, if you talk to curriculum directors over the last 10 years, they're going bananas because the measuring stick, the test that they're using to measure proficiency in different areas and at different levels has changed multiple times. So, so to have any kind of longitudinal analysis of how you're doing as a district versus other districts is basically impossible. So all of that said, I think, I think being able to do that, to come up with a cohort of districts that are similar and being, and being able to benchmark how you're doing from third grade right on up through to 10th grade is an effective way to, to rank yourself, but then also to address where your focus areas should be, you know? So being able to identify, all right, you know what? We've shown significant growth in math, but in science and technology, maybe not, or maybe it's been flat. Or what's, what also is fundamentally different with MCAS that I can't currently do as a Maine superintendent is also track student growth percentiles. So you're able to say, okay, well, we're tracking not just how, you know, you can track different subgroups of students, you can see how, how they're progressing versus their previous performance last year, you know, from year to year. So you can have that, you get that longitudinal analysis as a parent. I mean, you know, now that we're back in Andover, like, my seventh grader got her, her first round of MCAS results, and I'm like, hey, look at this! You know? And now I can track and see how she's doing in different, different areas as she progresses through, through her academics. So that is, that is, I think, a valid way of going about, if you're going to rank yourself, trying to, you want to get as much as you can, apples to apples. And that's why I also mentioned kind of per pupil expenditure too, because there was some evidence to suggest a little bit in the, in the Groat and Dunstable by the numbers that, that performance versus, you know, how much we're spending per student, that kind of thing. Like, you're able to, to come up with some analysis that I think helps benchmark progress, but then also identify areas to hone in on.
Okay, thank you.
US News, US News and World Report won't do that for you. But that doesn't stop people from looking at it and being like, wait a minute, like, all of a sudden you're sixth? What happened? And it's, you know, and then it's, you have to try and navigate that. So it's real. I mean, those concerns are real, but those aren't very valid rankings.
Thank you.
Almost done.
All right.
The educational landscape is continually, continually evolving. How do you stay informed about the latest educational trends and challenges? And how have you adapted your strategies in past roles to address such changes? Could you give an example of how you have successfully integrated a new educational trend or tackled a recent challenge in a school or district?
So one of the, one of the challenges that, that we faced, this goes back a few years in Maine, was a law that required proficiency-based diplomas. So students had to graduate with a proficiency-based diploma, which meant schools, particularly high schools, which historically have not done this, adopt standards-based reporting systems. And so a lot of us went full throttle on this work. And for us that started at the middle school and were working our way up to the, to the high school to completely revamp how we assess, throw out old grades, GPA, all that kind of stuff. I mean, it was crazy. And, and, but we embarked, we started in on it, made some progress, actually had a cohort of kids at the middle school who had adopted standards-based reporting and completely changed how we evaluated students' academic progress. And it ultimately failed. We started to transition these cohort of kids who were going through seventh and eighth grade and were now entering the high school and had a whole system in place for how we were going to create a standards-based report card, built it all out and were on the precipice, really, of implementing when there was so much of an outcry across all high schools in Maine that the law was repealed. And we had to basically do a 180, went out of 180. I mean, the high school really never fundamentally changed how they graded. But there were a lot of teachers who had started using standards-based grading protocols, but then having the end grade still be a traditional letter grade. So what ended up happening was we, we kind of morphed it into standards-based grading with, with, with a letter grade at the end of it, more of a hybrid system of how do we evaluate our students' performance and then how do we utilize best practice for some of the standards-based instructional strategies and evaluation of kids that we were using to give them better feedback on where they were with, with their individual content skills? But then also being able to translate that into grades that families and parents understood, that the kids understood. And that was just, that was an example of some innovative practice that had, needed to be communicated in a more traditional way. And what I think that we, what came out of it, even though that the law was ultimately repealed and the parents in our community, very sensitive to GPA and where, you know, their children's transcripts and where they're going to college, understandably, really resisted the innovation. Where we ended up still protected some of the best practice and innovation that was happening in terms of how teachers were evaluating student work, but then also informing and allowing to communicate the grade in a way that parents understood. So, and it ended up being, I think, a failed initiative on the surface, but in reality, ultimately, I think where we ended up was, was better off for kids.
Thank you.
So we're actually hitting our mark of 75 minutes, so I am going to ask the committee for whatever we do for one, we have to do for all. We haven't completely gone around the room. If our candidate is willing, we can continue so that everyone has two questions that they ask, or we can choose to stop now. But as I say, if we do it for one, we'll have to extend the interview for the others as well.
Well, I guess my question would be to Mr.
Was I way too long-winded, by the way?
No, no, we just have a lot of questions.
Okay. My apologies if so.
I guess, I mean, are you willing to, I mean, is that...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's totally...
I'm comfortable with that, I think.
I would say continue. We'll get down to table three times.
Yeah, to continue with the two, and we've done twice.
I think, and then we'll make sure that we extend the others, or at least we allow the candidates that are coming up to make their way for two questions for everybody around the room, depending on the, regardless of the time that takes. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No, no problem.
All right, thank you. I'll make this quick. So to what extent does community feedback impact your decision-making process? And can you provide an example of a time that you had to make a decision that may have been contrary to public opinion, but that you felt it was in the best interest of students? How did you go about making and defending your decision?
Can you, what was the first part of that question again? I'm sorry.
To what extent does community feedback impact your decision-making process?
I think, I think it depends on what the decision is and who you define as, as community. You know, I feel like, so, so, community feedback, we just recently had a failed referendum vote on a new K-3 unified primary school in Scarborough and very much needed. We have a lot of students who are, who were in portables at the K-2 level and at the middle school, actually. And this was a project that would, that would bring everyone together onto one K-3 campus, which would then allow us to shift the sixth grade out of the portables and into our Wentworth School, which is currently grades three, four, and five. And, and community feedback, the challenge was, is we had a lot of public meetings explaining kind of the need and the why for the project. This has been an ongoing need for probably 10 years, 11 years. The community is very, very attached to the three small primary schools. And so that we would have forums, because it was something that was, I think, still kind of felt very far off, even though it was a very urgent need, there wasn't a lot of community participation during these forums. And so we went ahead with, you know, the, the solution of having a unified campus and presented it and, and really marketed it as much as possible. But again, these forums, there wasn't a lot of people who were attending and, and so there, the awareness wasn't there nearly as much, or the knowledge of the need. And ultimately, I think that's, that's why when it went to the voters and failed, there wasn't enough, I think, outreach, so to speak, for community involvement and something that obviously was going to be very impactful to taxpayers in the town. So that was certainly a has-been and continues to be a reflection on, you know, my leadership and on the, and the board and the building steering committee that had, that had been working hard for over a year to, to communicate this need and to talk about solutions and all of those kind of things. So an answer to your question is, is community input and feedback important for, you know, any kind of large initiatives and decisions that a district is making? It absolutely is. And sometimes, however, it can be challenging to get active participation and involvement until, in this case, we got a whole lot of involvement right before and, and a lot of, I think, folks that were opposed to the project, it was, I think it was easier, it was harder to convince them or to kind of lean into that, that pushback in a way that would be successful ultimately at referendum, which it wasn't.
Thank you.
My second question. Can you tell us about your experience working in the curriculum area that might include identifying a need to revise curriculum to align with DESI guidance and research, implementing a new curriculum, or assessing the curriculum that's already in place? What did you learn from these experiences and how would you use what you have learned in our district?
So at least if you're talking specifically about DESI curriculum frameworks, my position in SAG-AWS as executive director for curriculum and instruction, first of all, I was the first in the district, so there was no curriculum-wide direction. Also, at the time, SAG-AWS had, one, two, three, four, four or five neighborhood, four neighborhood elementary schools. One was a relatively newer building, probably had about 400, maybe 450 kids. And then the other three were very small neighborhood elementary schools of 200. They've subsequently been closed and they've gone to a more centralized campus since then. But, so there was, there was very little coordination across or the four different elementary schools in terms of the curriculum that was taught. And there, there was, there was no district-wide curriculum director. So that, I stepped in as the first one and that was a major, one of my, one of the first major tasks was to come up with a guaranteed and viable curriculum across content areas at the elementary school. So that started with adopting a unified language arts program, as well as a mathematics program that would cut across all four schools. Because trying to even get all the fourth-grade teachers in the same room together was a challenge, right? And, and so, but again, the, having that centralized DESI curriculum framework allows you the common language and, and creating the, okay, this is what the kids need to know and be able to do, and then here's how we are going to hit all of those standards and, but we're going to do this in a more collaborative and collective way across the four different neighborhood schools. So that, that was a big, a big challenge and certainly one of the big tasks of my first year in that position was to bring some of the, some coordination and collaboration across what had historically been four schools that were, you know, run pretty effectively but independently of one another.
Thank you.
And as far as that, how that applies to Groat and Dunstable, you know, it's becoming more and more important, you know, for our schools not to operate in silos and to communicate and collaborate and make sure that, you know, in this case, there's a brand-new school opening next year, but we'll have a shift of 100 students who will be, you know, transferring from Swallow Union now to the new building. And so that's going to present some challenges along those lines to make sure that, you know, that, that, you know, where kids are taught and how they're taught and who's teaching them and that there's that, that, you know, similar experience across what will be two very different buildings.
You already spoke a little bit about staff retention and ways that you would support it. I'm interested in how your particular leadership style makes teachers feel supported, how as a leader you identify and address their concerns and foster relationships? And also, if we were to ask families, students, and teachers who have worked with you in the past, what would they say was the biggest impact you made on the culture of their school community?
Right. Yeah, I, you know, again, my Falmouth experience, I mean, by year seven, I think... Yeah, you know, again, my Falmouth experience, I mean, by year seven, I think probably two-thirds of the faculty had had a Bruno kid at some point along their journey as, you know, me being their boss, which I don't know, that was always an interesting situation. I was the invisible parent, right? So I could just, the parent conferences, I would just, you know, I would, you know, just nod my head and listen and go about my business. But I think, I think, you know, one of the things, I forget where I stole this idea from, but I've done this every year as superintendent, at the staff opening, I give out golden tickets. They're not tickets, they're not gold, they're just yellow stickies. And I used to put them underneath, underneath the seats, like in an auditorium like this when we had our old staff opening, usually twenty-five, maybe thirty of them. And if you got a golden ticket, then I'm going to do your job for half a day. And you would schedule that at some point during the school year. I had a third-grade teacher, because the second floor of the elementary school would get wicked hot, particularly in the June months, so she held on to her golden ticket until, I think it was like June sixth. It was probably about ninety-five degrees in her room and picked the afternoon, and so I was, I was a fourth-grade teacher in sweltering heat, you know? And so I brought popsicles and we had some fun. But I was also, you know, I was also, I think the most, one of the most nervous I've ever been was I had to be, I was the middle school office manager on a Friday afternoon, and there's a whole bunch of early dismissals, and I'm trying to do eight million things at once, and, you know, a kid threw up in class and the teacher tried to call the office to get some, get a custodian and get some help, and I hung up on her. Then she called again, I hung up on her and again. So, anyway, like, it's kind of like the undercover boss, right? So I'm, I've been, you know, I've been a kindergarten ed tech, which is mainspeak for paraprofessional. I've been an AP calculus teacher, you know, cashed in on that. And so, you know, staff sees you as an educator and also, you know, being a little vulnerable and trying on things, and you also get to connect with people in ways that you don't typically get to as a superintendent. And it was, it ended up one of those things that started as like, jeez, I wonder what this would be like. And every year, I mean, I got staff who were asking about, you know, their golden ticket or trying to schedule, and it gets you in buildings, it gives you purpose as an educator, but then it also, you know, you're relationship-building. And as you mentioned as part of your question, at the end of the day, building relationships in a position like this is critical. And when you're retaining staff, again, it has to do with the people you work with and feeling like you're inspired and you have purpose in what you're doing. And those are just some, some ways that I've found to connect with staff that's a little unconventional, but, you know, people see me, they know who I am, I'm not an invisible superintendent, right? And it's pretty easy to get caught in your office. I've, you know, I've fallen into that trap before too, but, but when you're out there and you're in the community and in schools, then that has, that sends a message.
Thank you. All right, thank you for indulging us to make our way around the table.
No problem.
That concludes the interview with Jeff Bruno, and I, again, am going to encourage everybody to fill out feedback forms, whether you're watching online or through the Grotten channel over the weekend. We plan to make a decision on the twenty-fourth of January at our school committee meeting as to who we would like to extend an invitation to join our district. In the meantime, I believe that concludes our school committee meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And... ...tonight, right?